All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting adjourned. Today is June 11, 2024, and it's 7:06 PM. Would the clerk hold the rules, please?
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahoi.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Rafai, and Councilman Sedman are absent. We have a court.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleading allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states of America, and to the republic which we serve. One election for God, and his will for our generation.
Thank you. All right, do we have any community announcements today?
I guess we do, Mayor. But we have the ones from last meeting still on there. The July 15 to July 19 Team Wellness Center will be out in front of City Hall with a mobile screening truck doing preventive health screening services. They are screening for the long-term COVID. You can make appointments or just walk in. On July 7, 2024, there will be the annual Hindu religious rally celebration, auspices, functions of Rath Yatra. The event will start at 5:00 PM and go till approximately 7:00 PM to include a procession around town escorted by the police department. There will also be short speeches at City Hall. No roads are anticipated to be closed. It'll be a moving procession. We also have Conrad here with a couple of announcements as well.
Hello. I'm here on behalf of the Hamtramck Parks Conservancy. We'd like to invite you to two programs that are coming out to the park. The first one is the opening of, the ribbon cutting and opening of the new Elaine and Roger Zatkov Children's Playscape. It is a toddler playscape that was replacing, as you guys more than likely got many emails as we all did here at City Hall, of the playscape closer to Joseph Campo that was constantly broken, constantly being repaired, constantly being fixed. It has been replaced with a whole new playscape for, mostly intended for toddlers. So it's one of the many projects we have going at the park this year. And then the other event is on Wednesday, June 19. It's the Third Annual Hamtramck Stadium Juneteenth Celebration. Starts at noon with a flag-raising keynote speaker, program celebration, followed up by a home run derby, and a scholarship award ceremony, and a tribute game at 3:00. I've got flyers for you guys about each one that's having there, and you are all graciously welcome to attend.
Thank you. Any more announcements?
I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, looks like we don't have any presentations or presentations today. Do we have any additions or deletions today? All right, then we move to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Conrad, advance, guys.
Hi, I'm here on behalf of a different volunteer committee I'm part of. So I just want to say, I'm here thanking you for giving us the opportunity to continue the tradition for the 44th Annual Hamtramck Labor Day Festival and the Third Annual Hamtramck Labor Day Parade. There is a dedicated group of volunteers who give up a majority of their summer and a lot of their time that weekend to help with this event, and that's beloved by the community. So thank you for the opportunity for us to volunteer to keep this going.
Thank you, Conrad. Muhammad Al Nizkil, Nizkil?
Anizaidi.
How do you pronounce it?
Muhammad Anizaidi.
Pardon?
Thank you. I'll be with Mr. Muhammad, translator. My name is Amishiro. I am with the YUC News Channel and American International News, and I am a human activist and I am taxpayer at Hamtramck. So this is what we do. Cover the news and then defend rights for people. So you can start in, if you have three minutes, you can start in Arabic. I do have your case already.
In Arabic.
You can, yes, sir.
Okay. Kala manjyad, this is my script. Okay. I had a card, third floor, with George, George's name, Nixah. Friday, 24, 8:00, noon. What ticket had a summer in the hair in two months? Since March. I had a lot of them, the bliss of Hamtramck. He followed me from the sea to the ding. When he followed me from the sea to the ding, from Hamtramck to Detroit area. When I get from Flamingo Street, he hired in there, 3:19, March. It was Ramadan fasting. And they follow me straight. I used to think it's not police officer, someone they tried to rob me or do something to me. I will not write to the 6:25. He follow me. He tried to gather inside and decide he tried to, like, he want to pass. And I just see who the, I look on the hand, I get camera on the front, but I ain't gonna look camera in the back. So when I turn from Flamingo to stop sign Detroit, I mean, stop sign Carpenter in Flamingo, I stop sign, and I turn, signal right, I go back home. So when I keep going straight ahead to Carpenter.
I need the cocaine.
When I was, I wanna complain, when I was in Carpenter Detroit, I exit the area, Hamtramck to Detroit, and he turned the light behind me. Two police officer, one with flashlight on my right, on the right side, one on the left. One of them, they talk to me rough, and on the right side, he's very cool person, he's very quiet, I don't hear anything. He told me, "Sir, registration, why you do that? Stop sign, you do that." He didn't know how, he confused, he selfie. I said, "I don't," I stopped, and he said, "I'll help you, I'm gonna help you for speed limit over 35." He said, "Why you give me the ticket?" He give me the ticket. When I was here with George, I said that he needs camera, I need to fear you for police officer. Why he didn't stop me, since when I do it wrong? He stopped, he have to stop me. Don't take alone, and a mile or whatever, couple of miles. He said, "Stop, stop, you have to pay for translation." He said, "You not speak English, you speak English very well. I'm gonna charge you $100 for translation."
Thank you, Muhammad.
Stop. She told me like that.
Thank you, sir.
Very well.
You're all set. Thank you so much.
Can she yell at me? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well.
That's all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
So what's up with your point?
That's all for public comment, thank you.
Want to tell your point that Wes told you to tell you.
All right, thank you. So it seems that this gentleman's case is already in court, so not sure the city can do anything. It's in the court, and that's, we have nothing to do with the court. With the judge, then they have to decide on that. And, you know, you have, if you feel like you need to hire an attorney to, you know, get your rights protected, you can do that. So thank you for all the people who spoke in the public comments, and we move now to the consent agenda, and it's approved with a single motion with no discussion. We have one, A, approval of minutes from the May 28, 2024 regular city council meeting, B, approval of invoice register date ending June 11, 2024, C, approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending June 11, 2024, D, resolution 2024-62, approving appointment to board the committee. Motion. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
No objection?
No.
Do you want to swear?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yusuf, pardon.
You're up.
How are you?
Good.
So we are swearing, Yusuf's side, into the planning commission. Right hand up, please, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Yusuf's side.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The planning commission.
Planning commission.
Of the City of Hamtramck.
Of the City of Hamtramck.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I believe you already received your bottom packet to the group, right?
Yes.
Okay. Sign here and there for me. Nope? Okay. Thank you so much. Congratulations. If you want to speak.
Do you want to tell us something about yourself?
Yes, I'm blessed by the best. It's too blessed to be stressed. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the city. We all together, working together to move forward and make the City of Hamtramck the best place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Yusuf.
All right, we move now to the public hearing, and we have.
Thank you.
Resolution 2024-50B, approving second reading and public hearing of Hamtramck 2024-2025 general appropriation ordinance.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And now a motion to start the public hearing.
A motion again.
Second.
717.
Eight, what's it, 717? Mr. Mayor, we have no public comments. I need a motion to close, please.
Motion, the second.
Who motion, Hassan?
I do.
Of consent. 717, Mr. Mayor, it's all public comment.
So I needed a little bit of clarification from the controller, if possible, before we vote on that. So the summary of the budget shows that we have fund balance of $7 million, but when we move to the other resolution, it's saying $9 million. So what is that difference? We didn't have $2 million.
The resolution 65, when you put nine in fund balance, but in this one, seven point two.
It's, I don't want those.
Can I see that on the screen? Is he talking about on the screen?
You want to pull the summary of the budget?
Here, the summary?
Yeah, yeah.
Here, summary budget 2024. You want to take a look at it, Amir, or do you have it?
Okay.
Seven million. I just, we talked to you about something.
Public comment?
Yeah.
Put that one on the phone.
Okay.
Nope.
I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, at the front table.
Oh.
Okay. Yeah, so in there, if you notice, there is a column for last year's numbers, and then there is a column for the budget and next year's. So the activity during this year is what changes the remaining balance for the budget. So right now, these are again tentative number because we haven't closed the year this year yet. So these are just tentative numbers in terms of the fund balance. Fund balance will get actualized once we close the year for 2023, 24. That's why you see the difference.
So basically, we haven't used.
We haven't used.
Anything.
No, no, we haven't, we haven't used anything up until now. What you would see is a slight usage of the fund balance. Again, these are tentative because we haven't closed the year yet. So these are four halves in terms of the fund balance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So again, it is not true to use it. Whereas as soon as he close, it could be more, you see it?
Right.
So don't feel that you still have the nine million. As soon as he close, it could be the five million, it could be the seven million. It's still here, right? And then, you know, going and coming, going and coming. So that's why he's saying tentative. So the resolution we are bringing to the public hearing, just question, why, we just did the basic things like if I for Woodson.
Right.
So why I have to bring that one again to the, for what he's bringing that?
The fourth quarter amendment, you talking about? That's just the normal way because this is the budget for next year. The fourth quarter amendment is for this current year.
Okay. So why is necessary? Just, it's question, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Like you receive. Okay, so why, so why we cannot wait for closing?
Because you need the amendment, amendment before the.
So I want to tell the councils, most of them, some of them don't understand.
Right.
There is amendment going off.
Right.
There is a loss of right.
Right.
The council member, look at that.
Yeah.
There is the loss of right. There is the reason, is bringing amendment, fourth quarter, because it grows, it pretty sure makes you a surprise sometimes, family. So again.
So as the year progresses, things change, you know, I mean, some, some of the budget line items go out of whack and whatnot, and as we do the budget amendments throughout the year, or the quarter, quarterly amendments, we bring things in alignment and bring them before you to say, okay, we might have goofed up on this line item, we need to amend this because we changed this, and that's why we bring them right along.
It could be the very minimum. So the memory is all about the nine to seven, a small city, a small revenue, nine to seven, that is the one.
Right.
His brain clicking what's going on. So again, there is the last couple of years I've been talking, there is the prediction money, very dangerous. Prediction money, very dangerous. So anyway, we see the, you're closing, then how does come up?
Well, yeah, I was just surprised because $2 million is a big amount of money, and whatever amendment we have done would not reach that amount of money. We have, you know, that's a big amount of money for any amendment to be done. And the other thing is the revenue is showing that we have enough to cover where, you know, expenses we have. So I don't think that we're gonna need to withdraw that much money from the fund balance to cover where.
No, we probably, we won't require that kind of money. If you remember, we did spend more money on the alleys, which I told earlier, which will come out of the fund balance, but we have not finished that project, and we have not closed the accounts yet. So I don't know that number yet. But we will use some of the account balance in this year, but we won't, you know, we won't come to $7 million.
Okay. All right, so we know the use any grant money for alleys, or it's all this?
We just, we haven't gotten any grant money for alleys in the past. It's difficult to get the grant money. We did get some grant money this year, which we are going to be using later on, but it's difficult to get grant for alley.
We have had it in the past.
We did.
And we have used it in the past. This immediate past year, we used fund balance for alleys. We have a little bit of grant money right now that we're using for some alleys. We just scored some grant money coming up for alleys, but we're still waiting for the federal government to tell us exactly what we can even use that for, before we can even allocate that. In fact, Councilman Spire, he's been poking at me kind of daily to find out about that, but we haven't even been told yet on that one. But as Amir said, it's hard to get the funds for that. Usually, we rely on the state government for those funds for that. So we're hoping that our state rep and state senator might come through on some of that for us, but we got our fingers crossed.
And the other problem is that you cannot use the road swell for the alleys. That's another issue.
All right, I guess we can vote on that.
Councilman Hassan.
I'm gonna say no.
Councilman El Samiri.
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahoi.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-50B approved.
I mean, did I have to?
Oh.
I didn't need to vote on this. It's not an ordinance.
No, you didn't need to. Well, it is an ordinance.
Okay.
Did you want to, you want me to count your vote?
Yeah.
But he doesn't have to.
Oh, he doesn't?
He doesn't have.
He can abstain.
I can abstain, but it's okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-50B approved.
Okay. All right, thank you. We move to the old business now. We have resolution 2024-48, approving street closure for 2024 Hamtramck Labor Day Festival.
I'd like to offer.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman, you're on.
Last time, last council meeting, we pulled the resolution, and I see it's here now, and you was the leader of the discussion with the festival committee. I don't know how much you got discussion with them. Before I approve, I want to hear from you, whatever discussion you guys had.
All right, I can brief you on the meeting that happened, and we would like to hear also updates from one of the members of the committee since then. So basically, we had a very productive meeting. I asked some of the council members to attend, but they were busy, so I was there with Councilman Samiri, city manager, and two of the organizing committee members. And we had a friendly discussion about some concerns, and we basically agreed that this is an event to bring people together, not to divide people. This is not a political event. It shouldn't be used to promote any kind of politics or any groups or any agenda. So, and we voiced some of the concerns of some of the members of the city council and the community as well. And I think we agreed that they will take these consideration into, these concerns into consideration, and they said they will talk to the rest of the committee and update us if there's any, any concerns from them as well. So I would like to hear if there's any updates from you. Mr. Chair? If they can update us on them, we can.
I don't really have any updates for the committee or anything else. I thought we came up with the solution pretty much at that meeting. So nothing has changed from that meeting that we discussed in there on our end. So everything that we agreed to and spoke at and agreed upon over there is still what is staying the same.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I believe that yourself, Councilman Samiri, who attended the meeting in the committee, are wholeheartedly on the same page that yourself and the council's concerns were met wholeheartedly by the committee, and that the committee and Mayor and council are going to move forward in unison on this. Hopefully, we have a wonderful parade and festival this season. And if any, if any concerns arise along the way up until that point, anyone can reach out to me. We can have a quick meeting at any point, address those concerns, and we will immediately put those to rest.
And we haven't had a committee, a whole work committee as well, but I did see with the parade chair, she's on board with what was discussed at council.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, what can I?
Oh, yeah, thank you. So, I don't want to help meeting with you, so you don't have any update here? If you approve it, they're gonna, they're gonna follow the discussion, or they're gonna do their own?
Well, they just told us that there is no change, so if we are on the same page as we finished the meeting, so I think we are, we are not gonna have any problems. But, I mean, they, they know that if anything happens from now until then, they will update us if any.
Anything.
Stuff that we didn't agree on. And if anything happens suddenly during the event, then that will have some consequences in the future, so.
I think it's important that we're on the same page as far as communication, that the communication flows back and forth.
Okay, and I do appreciate, you know, the volunteering time that you put. We thank you for that, and we want this event to continue, and we want everyone in the city to enjoy coming to this event. It's supposed to bring people together for entertainment and to have fun, so we want to keep that going.
I very much agree with you, Mr. Mayor. This event could be the fun for the people, not the division, or not for the political movement.
Sure.
Please keep it that way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if nobody speak, I want to speak.
Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, they have to understand DDA. They're appointed by this council. Some people, some DDA member don't understand that. And same thing that, listen, what I'm saying, you don't have to worry about it. So again, I need only 72 hours to call the special meeting to stop this if I see anything going the wrong way. That's all I want to say.
Well, this is not the DDA.
Festival committee, too. Still.
No, this is in the fore, this is all.
Well, all still approval is coming to us. We can stop anytime. People have to understand mentality there.
DDA approve.
Not only DDA, with this one.
We approve some donations for them. That's what the DDA do. And we can have a meeting about that soon. But yeah, I guess we're all on the same page, so I thank you.
Your vote?
Yes.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-48 approved.
All right, thank you. And we move to the new business. We have resolution 2024-63, approving award of the 2023 alley construction services.
Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have John DeAndalus here talking this, and Mr. Hennessey talking this.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We're in front of you this evening for the construction oversight for the alleys. And, I'm glad, just to wrap up the final few, the additional alleys that were put into place through there for a.
Mr. Mayor, in short, basically, we added a bunch of alleys.
At the end of last year.
Including the East Joseph Campo Alley, and this is, we didn't figure those in. They were added at the tail end, and we had to amend this and add Hennessy's portion on to it. This is a little bit of a catch-up. They're already out there doing some of the work for us. We need to get it approved.
So are you doing it complete alleys, or just the PI?
The East Joseph Campo Alley is being done all the way from Evelyn to basically CVS. So it's a, it's a big one.
It's about a third, more or less. This is somewhat of an administrative issue.
And Hennessy, being a longtime partner, has already stepped up and is rolling with it, so we just need to cross our teeth about it.
So basically, this is, is like an amendment or addition of funds for?
This is an addition. This wasn't originally in the, because we added this alley on after the fact from last year. So this is one that was asked to be done. It wasn't in the original plan of alleys last time, and we added this big alley on at the end of last year. But when we approved Hennessy's award to oversee all of them, this one wasn't in it.
It wasn't included.
So we had to add this one in.
This is just the management side of it, it's not the actual construction side of it.
The alley was approved, but we forgot, well, they're not gonna say forgot, but we, we got the alley in it, and we didn't have the Hennessy's approval on it, so they're, they're getting us rolling, but we still got to get them approved.
And the contractor held their pricing through there, that's why the contract was extended for the contractor to allow for this additional alley construction.
So this is $50,000 just for observation and?
Construction testing and staking and project administration.
For the alley from CVS to Kinnef, is that not?
From the CVS to Evelyn. To Evelyn, CVS.
It's, it's the long one.
It's the line all the way to Elbrook.
It's not a long, it's not a work that we have in Conan. It's not a longer one. The bigger one, in Conan, when we done, or me, that's a big one. This one, three, four block.
So, yeah, I was thinking it's all the way to Kinnef, it's not, right?
No, not Kinnef, it gets to Evelyn, from the CVS to Evelyn, from Florian to Evelyn.
Does this one have Conan on it, too, John? I'm not sure.
Conan, yeah.
This was Conan, and I think the one behind the store, too. Behind the store, too. There's three alleys on this management. And there's three, yes.
I thought I didn't spell.
There's a series of alleys on.
So when you say here in Ploura, alleys, is this for just one alley or for what? I mean, because it's in here, observation, complete the remaining alley.
Three alleys.
I believe there was three.
It's the three alleys that, that were added on to the original alley project.
Three alleys, every version?
Five through 11.
So three alleys, every version?
Five through 11.
There is all about the 54,000 dollars.
49.
I will say that Hennessy has scrambled along with us to like get these alleys cranked out in a very fast timeline to get them moving fast this year. Council spoke.
Mr. Mayor, I understand. Would you have the department do, oversee the construction, oversee all those things?
I, I'm just saying, we, they, we were scrambling to get these out and, I mean, we're, we're moving warp speed this year.
Oh, yeah, we're, we kept the contractor in the, brought into the city, made sure that they kicked us off first and made us the top priority. And that's staying, staying prevalent.
All the alleys that did not make it for winter, first, first, right off the rip, got out there.
Okay. That's what I'm going to, what you do, you go see them, but it looks good, that's all you do. Still, my building department can go and see that too, same thing what you do. It is not the, like you mustn't say, our department cannot go in, somebody else has to go see that way. That was the same thing what you see for the sea.
I do believe, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a contractor myself, councilman, but I do believe there's a lot more involved than that. I mean, there's day-to-day watching what all our contractors are doing, there's, there's posting, there's all postings to all the various houses, there's coordination of efforts out there. I mean, there's, there's a lot involved in this.
There's construction staking, there's testing of the material that come through the concrete to make sure it meets specifications.
If it was literally just sending John out there to look at it and say, yeah, it looks good, I mean, I would...
It is money coming from general fund. That's all my discussion. I'm not disagreeing with other things.
I, I understand you, you are putting us to the task. I, I get it. I'm just, I'm just trying to answer your questions as thoroughly as possible.
No, no, I know that my concern, I see what I see, I see what he see, that's all.
So I know it involves a lot of engineering stuff, I'm not saying it's just observation. My question was, the two alleys that were, were not done last year, I think we went through the process, you know, approved engineering supervision at the time. So that, that's the one in Nible and another one, those are different, they were done, we just, the time wasn't, didn't allow them to finish it on time. So this, which alleys are, are you approving this?
I have, it's, it's five through 11 of the 11 alleys we did. I would have to backtrack on the exact number. I can read back several of them off the top of my head, but it's five through 11. So clearly, we got a little bit ahead of ourselves. Hennessy, as our partner, just continued right along handling their business, which I do appreciate. They are, after all, still under contract with us, so it is not that big of an oversight because, I mean, they've been with us for a long time, they are under contract. But the right thing to do is come back to you guys and say, we do need for you guys to officially bless this, this is what they did. So hence, we are here. Now, I apologize that I didn't have off the top of my head it's alley five through 11. I was a little bit distracted. Sometimes I'm a little bit too have land, John, damn it. My fault. If you want, I can either provide that to you later, exactly which alleys these are for, but I assure you, these are all alleys that probably at this point are ordered and completed, some of which are still in the process of being ordered now.
All right, any further discussion?
Do they, about any before the other, observation, any other money we located previously?
I'm sorry, councilman.
Previous, any other areas for the supervision, like this kind of amount of money?
I don't think this is far out of line for the amount of alleys they supervise. I mean, we, this, I mean, it's, it's actually six alleys, so, and the amount of, amount of work they're doing, it seems, it seems pretty much on point.
It's a percentage based off of the contract.
It seems high, but it's a lot of alleys.
It's a lot of work, actually.
It is the first time I saw, saw those kind of money going from the, from the supervision.
If we were to add up, like went back to the history and looked at all the ones they did, it's, I believe it's right on line.
It is.
It appears 1.4 million.
I mean, it's reasonable if it's that many alleys, the, the only concern is if we go back in history to our last meeting trip when we did those alleys and find out that we approved some money for the same, you know, purpose.
Oh, no, it's not that.
The contract itself was 1.4 million.
Yeah.
So 50,000 or 49,000 supervision on 1.4 million, it seems pretty.
It's a pretty small percentage of the actual percentage when you look at that.
No, I'm saying that for the same purpose, like for observation and stuff in the past, the previous meetings.
No, no, there's no duplication is what you're concerned about, Mayor, I believe, right? There's a duplication of, of funding in a sense that there's multiple resolutions approving the same thing, and that's not the case. This is, this is the new alleys that came through. We worked with Amir's office as well.
Give it to next meeting to bring more type five mats or?
Well, you, I mean, it's, it's, it's crystal clear, it's alley five and 11. I just don't have the actual names of the alleys, but it's the amounts.
Was it when, I have seven alleys for 2023. It's on the resolution, I have a list of seven alleys. I know we added additional alleys to them, though. You want me to read off the seven that I have? Or is that irrelevant?
Which one?
Alley east of Moran from Comer to Kashmir, alley east of Joseph Campo from Goodson to Dead End. That one?
I think that was the, the one for that.
This was, uh, this was 2023 alley reconstruction design. This was issued, this was approved August 22nd of 2023.
I mean, if it was seven, then maybe you added the ones that we are doing this year or something.
So, I mean, we, we can certainly dig back through it if council chooses, but it's, it's not like, we certainly aren't duplicating payments, I will tell you that 100%.
We go for last year, we go for last years from Nible to Farben. This appropriate from the last.
So, Mr. Chair, since we don't have clear concept, what we paid for any supervision last year and we are adding this to this year, so I can't say the review the councilman will give, I want to hold, put into the table.
Just table it, we'll break it down.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what we have conception?
Yeah.
We need to also, I like to put the, the table, the resolution to table for next council meeting.
On second. Okay. All right.
I need an approval, please.
Yeah, can we, are we all in favor?
Yes.
All right. All right, so we are taking this resolution until the next meeting and hopefully by then we get names, number of alleys.
We get the exact ones.
And, and resolutions when we approved them last year, we, we can do some research about that and see what we did when we approved them last year.
Certainly.
Oh, thank you so much. All right. I guess we are done with this one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can move now to the next resolution. This is tabled for the next meeting. The next one is Resolution 2024-64 approving the adoption water asset management plan. Can I get a motion?
On motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, same to gentlemen, different resolution.
Different resolutions. This is somewhat of a housecleaning item. We received a DWAM grant from Eagle and as part of that, we had to prepare an asset management plan for just the water distribution system. It basically mirrors our capital improvement program that the community, that the council approves. And what we identified in that is basically trying to achieve three miles of water main replacement every year and 365 lead service leads replacements through there. This is not binding us to anything. This is kind of an overview of what we project our roadmap will be for our infrastructure, infrastructure needs. We will come back in front of council, obviously, you know, each winter as we do, we mark out the improvement, infrastructure improvement projects that we do annually. So this is a document that's filed with Eagle identifying those, but it's, it's dependent upon funding sources being available for the community.
Okay.
And just to add, this is a little bit of a reliability, it's, it's part of also a reliability study that we have to do every five years on our water distribution system, where we have to model the water distribution system. We take pressure readings throughout the community and we look at fire flows, capabilities, things like that. We have to file that with Eagle every five years. And this is kind of dovetails with that.
It's definitely an interesting read. There are 120-year-old mains on there.
There are.
There's a reason why we're trying to rip through them as fast as we are.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, we can do it on both, please.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-64 approved.
Thank you. Move to the next one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolution 2024-65 approving 2023, 2024 fourth quarter budget amendment.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have our control room here to answer any questions you may have on this, but it's, excuse me, as we touched upon earlier, this is a routine quarterly amendment. As the budget progresses throughout the year and things get out of whack, we realign things as things come up. And we have Amir here to put things back in order and bring it before this, I don't know, body to bring it back in line. Amir, do you have anything you want to mention?
It's just trying to anticipate some of the expenses because budget is again, you know, a planning tool, a forecast, and sometimes the revenues and expenses may come in line with that, sometimes they may be a bit different from, they may be a bit more or a bit less. So this is just trying to realign the budget to what the actual numbers may come, which we will be able to, you know, finalize in the next four months.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
So, again, the amendment, anywhere, any section you feel or you're thinking, involving you, you never thought it is going to be like a dead castle, any line at?
I think we have, we have spent more on overtime this year compared to what was in the, what was in the budget, but a lot of that had to do with some of the vacancies we had in different departments, like police and then some of the work that we had to do in emergency cases in terms of, you know, weather and other related activities in the building department.
So we already find one, it is extra money going out from the expectation.
Right.
It was down.
Right.
So now, even measure as responsibility, how next quarter, we have to control this, that's all I want.
Right.
We've already talked with the police department, actually.
And somebody question, will we approve? Yes, yes, yes. It's going to be, everything going to be yes. Okay.
Not, not that this was our current chief's, you know, his doing by all means, but we've, we've already had a discussion in regards to doing just that about police department overtime means it's being brought down a little bit, so.
So this is like millions of dollars overtime, is that?
One million, hundreds.
No.
Okay, I mean, I see for one area 785,000 overtime, another one 245,000.
No, no, no.
Where's that, Mayor?
Yeah, the last column, is that? No, 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 no.
Last is just the activity. That's the activity.
Where is the overtime? I mean, it's written next to overtime.
So, so fourth quarter budget amendment, you need to focus on that, which is like the fourth column?
I do.
Fourth column and now, and, and that, those are the amendments.
All right. We wrote that overtime next to the last column, so that's good.
Well, that, yeah, okay, I'm.
Okay. All right. So what is that CPA salary?
So CPA, we are right now finalizing and negotiating with the Fire Union and we still haven't finalized or closed it out yet, but the effect of that change is going to be effective first of January of 2024. So I'm just putting it, some numbers in there just so whenever we finalize that, we have enough money in, in the respective budget to cater for it. Okay. We have actually the Fire Union, CBA, which is effective whenever it closes first of January of this year. And then we have the police CPA coming up after that and the ASME, you know, CBA coming after that.
We've been negotiating with the Fire Union for months.
So, and, and this retiree cost of still 6 million, so we are not benefiting from that 17.5 million that you received just sitting there. I know you think about the long-term future, but if we don't benefit from it now, then that pressure will continue to be on the budget. So what's the point?
We, we have not asked them to apply it to our, our payment because, well, they, they've left it as is, so we're still paying the higher note.
So if I can explain, the 17 million that we did get was to bring us from the 42, 42% funding to the 60% funding. So I don't think it would be wise for us to utilize that amount to reduce our payments because then we will again be deficient in the 60%. And now the government has given us that money, so they are going to ask us to fund that gap. So I don't think that would be the right way to go about it.
Our hope is to continue, to continue leaving it in place and still paying what we're paying to close that gap so eventually, Hamtramck can get out from underneath that altogether.
Because that...
Basically paying more on the loan.
Right, that, that, basically, that payment from the government was to fund the difference between where we were to the 60% that is mandated by the state.
All right, I mean, we, we were hoping that we can utilize it somehow.
We need to find, I mean, some other way to address that.
I mean, if we continue to pay that amount of money, then this is going to help us after 20 years, 20 hours, so.
Well, if we continue to pay the higher amount and leave that money alone, our, it'll, it'll get paid down a heck of a lot faster and in theory, we'll be out from underneath it far sooner as a city. As opposed to if we let the payment go down, we'll just drag it out indefinitely, you know. So I mean, I, MERS has not like sent us the, the most recent actuary, but I believe the last one put us into...
So it was around 42%.
Yeah, but I think the last actuary said that we were be paying 6 million into 2039 or something, but I, I, we haven't got the newest actuary yet. So in theory, if we continue to pay the higher amount and leave that money in place and don't ask for a lower loan payment, then that we potentially could be out from underneath that far sooner.
Plus, it's, it's the state requirement also to get to that funding of 60%.
So they're actually going to be sending us another, what is it, 1.4 million here pretty soon. So that'll help even more. So we just got notified from that the other day, but we don't have all the details on that just yet.
Any last payment you behind?
No, we're not behind in any, any month's payment. We are current with the payments. The payments are made every month. The recording may be a little behind at some time depending on, you know, when we...
As long as you behind.
No, no, payment by the end.
So this is the fourth quarter, we have the nine million funds down. Is that to be the most updated?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus zero.
All right, any other? Excuse me, sorry. Okay.
On the voting? Was that a motion to vote? Are you telling me to vote or is there more discussion?
I, does anyone have any more questions?
No, that's motion to vote.
Okay, that's motion.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Ah, yes.
and leave that money in place and don't ask for a lower loan payment, then that, we potentially could be out from underneath that far sooner.
Plus, it's, it's the state requirement also get to that funding of 60%.
So they're actually going to be sending us another, what is it, 1.4 million here pretty soon. So that'll help even more. So we just got notified from that the other day, but we don't have all the details on that just yet.
Any last payment you have?
No, we're not behind in any, any month's payment. We are current with the payments. The payments are made every month. Recording may be a little behind at some time, depending on, you know, when we.
As long as you behind.
No, no, payment by the.
So this is the fourth quarter, we have the 9 million funds. Is that because you are the most updated?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Excuse me, sorry.
Okay.
Was that a motion to vote? Are you telling me to vote, or is there more discussion?
Does anyone have any more questions?
No, that's motion to vote.
Okay, that's motion.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-65 approved.
Thank you. And that was the last of the resolutions we have discussed today. We move to the reports. And I have, I mean.
What about it? We did it.
We did it.
Sir, we have, sir? Sir, we're in the middle of the meeting.
Okay, so you can talk to me later, please.
Nuzuli.
So I don't have much to say.
Okay, ready for your comment, please?
Yes.
No, this is first the report. So I just want to mention something. I received a complaint today where two gentlemen came to the clinic complaining about the signs that we put for no parking when we sweep the streets. They said their cars got towed because they came from work at night. They didn't see the signs. And the signs were put the day before the sweeping day, which is not logical, you know. If you, I mean, if someone works really from noon until night, he will come home, see this, he wouldn't see the signs, and he would keep the car in the street. So we need to put those signs, you know, earlier, not the day before the sweeping day. It doesn't make sense. I mean, I can see that if I worked from noon until night, I'll come home and I would see the sign and go to speed, and then my car next morning will be towed. That doesn't make no sense. I showed them that we announced in public in the Facebook page, I showed them four days ago. He was like, I don't have Facebook, I don't use Facebook. How am I, am I supposed to know if you post on Facebook and I don't use Facebook? So we need to work on that because there's more streets, right, that will be seen. Go ahead.
I, I did speak with that gentleman, Mayor. I, I don't think he realized that we did put it out a full 24 hours. I think he thought we posted it later than we actually did. And I explained to him our whole process, and by the time he left, he actually was pretty content with the conversation I had. But we did post it, we did put the signs out pretty early the day before, and then in addition, we did do social media. But I can first certainly ask our DPW to give an extra day's notice, for sure. That, that's not unreasonable to ask. So there, but as you stated, there was two people that got towed. But in addition to that, there was a lot of cars out there. But we always summon our police department to come out and assist with that. The police department always comes out, turns on the lights and sirens, runs license plates, knocks on doors. I mean, the city goes way above and beyond to try and get cars moved all the time. Like towing cars is like by far the last, last-ditch effort we, we do. I mean, we, that's the last thing we want to, we want to possibly do. And even with that said, the people that came in, we even tried to help them with the towing costs.
Okay. So that, and I guess we are not going to have a meeting until after the holiday of Eid. So I would like to take this opportunity and just say Eid Mubarak to everyone who is going to be celebrating. And I want to mention that the parking would be free from June 13th to the 17th, right?
I would have to look. What was we posted?
17th or 18th?
That's right.
It's from 13th to the 17th. So, so parking are free. Parking is free for almost five days. And it seems that there will be a big festival. I, we should have included that in the announcements, which is organized by the Miller Mosque. But it's a huge festival in the parking lot where Veteran Park, you know, that area, there will be, it would be for three days. And thousands of people come to this Eid festival, and we call people to join there and take their kids and families to have fun in the eight days for three days. With that, I finished my report, and the next one is the mayor protest report.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind me interrupting you, I got the email pulled up, so I'm going to read the dates out loud if you don't mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Taking, I'm going to read it exactly how she said it. Taking into account the Sunday free parking and using the city observed date as the holiday, five days of free parking would be Thursday, 6:13, through Tuesday, 6:18.
Eighteen.
Juneteenth is Wednesday, 6:19, so that holiday's free parking day would immediately follow. So it's going to be from Thursday, the 13th, through Wednesday, the 19th.
Okay.
Also, Mayor, if anyone happens to have a flyer for the Eid festival, if somebody can send it over, we can get it posted on, on our social media as well. I don't think I ever got a flyer. I mean, we had the application for it, but I have yet to see a flyer or anything for it.
Okay, I can send you one.
You'll see the flyer.
Yeah, it's all over Facebook, but, so I can send you some. All right, Mayor Potam, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last two, if you can hear the video from me, especially for the community people. After, almost two years later, embassy of, Bangladeshi embassy from Washington DC, they come to serve our community last Saturday. And Sunday was packed. We don't have a space for Hamtramck, so we arranged this meeting, and there's service in Nine Mile and Royal. So a lot of community people was there from Hamtramck, Detroit, who are in, rest of the community was there. We serve these people. It was the, and councilwoman, Ms. Worder, was there to visit us. Councilman Complason also was there, and I was a part of the organization. I was there 100% of the time. And our Eid, it was 16th Sunday. We celebrated Eid, and we said, in here and abroad, all the Muslim people who was in community, Happy Eid and Eid Mubarak. And I feel from my heart, the people of Gaza and all other places where the Muslim people was getting insulting and fighting for their rights. I pray for them and keep them the prayer. Thank you very much to give me the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmembers?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman.
First of all, thank you all the council members. What we approved last council meeting, a hit to the Al Jazeera headline news. And it's good thing worldwide, everybody see that. And we're doing the right thing. Other is little concern is coming. Today is the last day. Three consecutive council meeting, two council member missed. According to the Sutter, after three consecutive missing from the council member, missing from the meeting, there is the issue in Sutter, if you read Sutter. That's why I tried to bring this resolution to do not make the conflict with the Sutter, to get the approval. That's why nobody can talk and discuss after today meeting. The excuse left as an excuse is still because we did not brought as a resolution to approve it as a excuse. So those excuse, it is still not excuse absent. It is staying there as an excuse in somewhere. It's not the excuse. Just one concern, I heard some people discuss, and I just want to let you know. Basically, is that. And also, we used to have budget session meeting like three days, four, five hours, three, two hours a day. It's open from like 10 to 2 o'clock. If somebody miss, any council member miss, other council member is there. We used to do the budget session meeting, department by department.
We did that. You were absent that day.
Okay, it was, it was not a one-day budget session. It cannot be within two hours everything together. Okay, just want to let you know. We used to have a three-day budget session with the department head, one by one, open discussion. So I think in future, we should do the schedule like that. That's why better understanding to, you know, from the department head and council members. And that's all, basically.
Thank you. Any other reports? All right, I guess we come to the end of reports, and we move back to the public comments.
Hamad Al Nuzuli?
Good.
Do you need a translator, sir?
Absolutely.
I'm talking to the.
We mentioned that early. Yeah.
Well, he has to use the three minutes. We can't add another.
Yeah, because the three minutes was.
It's two minutes.
So he can talk for like one minute, and then he, he can translate.
I'll talk Arabic.
I'll talk Arabic. One minute, and then he use the other minute to translate.
I'll talk Arabic.
If you want to ask for another minute.
I'll talk Arabic. I'll show you my questions. In American law. The American law that you promised me, the law. Will it be the law that you promised me 100 dollars? I'll translate. And this city promised me. Second one. The British officer, why didn't you give me? When I did the assessment, why didn't you give me the video? That's where I'm fine for it. He stopped to give me the video. Why didn't you? Thank you. So I feel, I feel in my heart, that you are cruel to me. I feel for you. I feel for this. When you told me stop to pay 100 dollars. Will it be the law that you promised me? I'm a city. If you're a city, but you're Muslim, you have the law.
Mr. Mayor, he has a minute left.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm going to talk about the right real quick. I understand the legal rights, which is we're going to follow it.
The legal rights, you translate, please.
Ma'am, excuse me.
He has to translate. You can't speak your point.
This, this point.
And you're losing your time.
Okay, this is what we talked about, so we need another minute.
Go ahead, you have, you can have.
Okay. Now, Mr. Mohammed here believe his right was taken from the city of Hamtramck? Okay. Basin has a speech that all the 40% population, it's Yemeni and Arabic, they need a translator. Those rules and charges, who's above this? Who's making it? Is it the city or the judge? If the judge, he's follow his right, and so the judge for this. The police department refused to give him his footage. Who's in control over the police department? Is it the city or the judge? Thank you. We just need this so we can move along and follow the rules. And I've been doing my research, Mr. Mayor and Mayor, and all that was.
Can you please fill out his own form, Mr. Mayor?
I don't like to be interrupted.
You're not following rules. I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you.
You can.
You can file a court also.
It's not that difficult.
You can use another to make for yourself. Okay, so, so once you are in the, in the court, I will say it in English and Arabic, the court is a separate entity. I cannot punish the, the judge. I cannot fire the judge. We, we cannot. We have no authority on the judge, okay?
Okay.
So the court is separate entity. Regarding the police department, we can talk, we can ask the city manager and the attorney to clarify to us if it's allowed to get, you know, photos. I'm not, I don't know, I'm not a lawyer. But we can ask our attorney, the city manager, they can talk to the police chief and see if you have the right to get those videos.
Right.
That's, then you can get them, not a problem. And if you feel like you are, your rights were taken away from you, like you are saying, I mean, you're free to hire an attorney and, and proceed with that. I mean, we are here to support anyone to, you know, to get their rights protected. We are not, we're going to give you every opportunity that we can provide to you to defend yourself. But there are some, you know, there are a limit. We, we don't have the absolute power over the court or, or others.
Thank you, Mayor.
But we can, I can let you discuss with the city manager and attorney after the meeting, and they can direct you to what you do, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it, thank you.
Wa alaikum.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
It's all right.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Salaam alaikum. First of all, thank you so much for letting me talk a bit here. I just wanted to show you guys first how much I love the city. I moved here in 1996. And from that, I graduated with Dr. Gallium, Mr. Mayor, 2000. And still, until 2018, I was living in here. But 2018, I have to move out because of my son go to special school. And before that, I served as a planning commissioner here. I worked with Hassan Bai and Musa Bai, and, you know, I love the city. So let me get to the point. At the bait, you know, Hamtramck City has a lot of vacant lot, and I owned a couple of them before, and I built two beautiful houses, everybody knows. The one in Trow Bridge, I combined two lot together, and it was a very, very nice big house. And also, I did another one in Yemen. And now I'm doing another one in Prescott. So the main point is, I wanted to build the house, but the fee for the street to the sidewalk, this is really high. So I want to give you guys in the knowledge that if you guys can work on it and put this down, a lot of builders will come and build the houses, and which is bring a lot of business to the city. And my dream is to see the city of Hamtramck lot of new houses. Because lots, so, I know I can talk all day, but we have to finish in really fast. So please, I talked with Mr. John as well, and he knows I pull a permit for like quarter million dollar and 4,000 just for the building department, just one fee. And there's individual, every different department have to pull the permit. Lot of money coming in the city. So give us some break to build a new house. I can build a lot of house, and this is what I'm here for. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all for public comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I guess we come to the end, and I would like motion to adjourn.[1711.46]